You're on record.
All right, good evening, everyone. An announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Pareek.
Yes.
Mr. Eddie.
Present.
Ms. Snyder. Here. You have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
All right, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's easy to call it from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hokey doke. At this time, is there anybody who has business to conduct in front of the board that is not on tonight's agenda? Correspondences, we have the one from application 2317 asking to be carried to January 24th of next year without further notice and then granting us the extension through the end of that month.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, no resolutions, so it's agenda time. Application 2350, Prashant Patel. Come on up.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board to show yourself you got. And for the record, you are Prashant Patel. You're the owner of the subject property, 130 Flemington Drive, block 260. You're sworn, have a seat, please speak in the microphone. The chairman, the witness is sworn.
Thank you, all right. Mr. Patel, you are looking to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling. Can you just walk us through your application? Tell us why you need this?
Would you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah, you gotta get into that mic.
So it's an existing house, but a portion of the house is not in livable condition. And I'm trying to make in a way where I can align with all the regulations as much as I can.
You know, we need you to speak up, I'm sorry, they can't hear in the back.
Try the other mic.
Try the other one, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm trying to keep the same lot coverage as what is now, but I'm just lifting and shifting the area and the design. So that's pretty much I'm looking for, and since this is an undersized lot, so because of that, either way, I go below, I mean, try to keep up 20% as per the rule, it will be below the minimum, and if I go over, it will be over 20%, so.
So it's only, not the whole house you are bringing down, right? Only half of it?
Yes.
And basically, you are using the same footprint, or you're willing to increase the?
So more or less, it's the same footprint, a lot coverage that I'm planning to do, but I'm just trying to lift and shift, so I'm just demolish some portion of being constructed now, and so, and try to be in, more in line with the setback as much as I can, I mean, compared to what it is now. So it is, as of now, it is very off, but I'm trying to come more in line with the current limit.
So it's not the same footprint, because your building coverage is 4% bigger?
So as of today, it is 23% already.
3% bigger than?
No, just 1%.
Oh, you're currently 23%.
Current is 23%, and it's, I'm just adding 1%.
Okay.
What do you think you're going to save from the existing building? The foundation?
So the, so the right side of the house is recently built, but the left side of the house was very old, and it is not in livable condition.
If I'm standing in the middle of Fleming Creek Drive, you're referring to the right side being?
Newly constructed.
To the south, and the left side would be the north side of the house.
Yeah, the one which is a single-story, that is not in livable condition, and also the crawl space is not safe, collapsing, I mean, is...
All I'm asking is, you're trying to maintain existing non-comportances for a side yard, which is the 5.6-foot side yard, is that a portion of the foundation going to be retained?
As of today, it's 5.6 something, but I'm going to do 6.6 something.
You're going to remove that, then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and that can fall. Okay. Essentially, this is going to be a new home, then?
Sorry, sir, there you go.
It's going to be a new home, boy.
Yes, I mean, you can say that because half of...
You're not going to say much.
Yeah.
So did you review the engineer's report? My concern is the storm water management around your project, and the fact that his concerns are going to be addressed. Period.
Have you seen this memo? From Mr. Lizza?
Yeah, so I consulted the site engineer, and they have, I submitted the report of the site engineer as well, so that is being addressed as well.
Right, but, but did you read the November 2nd, 2023 memo from the municipal engineer, Justin Lizza? He cites numerous concerns, and those would be my concerns as well.
I have not received any of the communication in that regards.
Well, we didn't get it.
Did you, do you have an engineer?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Did your engineer receive it?
Yeah, I don't know.
So you're going to comply with everything that's in that letter?
Yeah.
Well, he's just reading it now, it seems.
Well, he's got an engineer who probably should have been here and testified.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not that kind of technical person, but as per the site engineer...
Yeah, but if you have, I'm sorry, to Mr. King's point, though, you have an engineer, where is he?
Sorry?
Where is he tonight?
He's not here.
Okay, so chances are, to Mr. King's point, your engineer received this. Okay?
Okay.
No, maybe not? Okay?
He testified that he did.
In short, if we have to go approve this application, you have to comply with the engineer's report.
So I can give it to him and get a...
No, no, you have to comply.
The only way we're voting yes is if you agree to comply with each one of those recommendations.
This is not a search-and-chose type of exercise, this is, you will comply. These are, you know, these are concerning points that the engineer has made, and I'm calling it out.
So I can say the first one is a recommendation, which is, I'm agreed to in line with, second is also not moving major soil, so it is also going to be in line. So I talked to my site engineer as per what he said, mentioned to me when I asked for it, but as per his recommendation, it is not required. The...
He doesn't really...
Sure, that's called hearsay. That's, that's why it would have been important for him to be here, he could have been telling us what's, what... It seems like your engineer has a little bit more information.
Okay.
And knowledge about this. So are you going to comply? Will you comply with that letter?
Yes, I will comply with that letter.
All those points.
Both points of the letter.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Because of time, are there any...
I'm sorry, there's a note at the bottom of the review about a fence that needs to be addressed.
Do you know about a fence that's on your property, or kind of?
It's a, it's a neighbor fence, it's not my fence.
But it's on your property?
It's on the property line, I'm, I'm not quite sure it's on my property or the neighbor's property.
It says it's on your property line.
So you're going to have the neighbor remove it?
I'll...
Or you can legalize also, right? Is the option to legalize also?
Yeah.
Different.
Yeah, because we have, we have a lot of those cases where neighbors...
I have seen the fences already.
How do you legalize a fence that's not his, on his property?
But if it, if it's the neighbor's property and he's okay with it...
It's, I don't think it's the neighbor's property.
I think it's his fence on his property.
Well, he's testifying, it's not his fence.
It is, it seems like neighbor's fence, because I see the finish side is on my side, so meaning that, but even then, the fence is collapsed anyway, so I'm, I mean, what I saw, it's, the fence is already in collapse.
How high is the fence, do you know?
It is five feet or something, five feet or six, almost six feet, yeah, six feet. Wood fence, but as I said, it's already in collapse.
It already what, collapsed?
Yeah.
So it has to come down anyway?
Yes.
So as a condition, which...
So did you hear that? He says it's collapsed, it has to come down.
I can remove the fence, and if...
You can't remove anything if it's not your property.
Well, no, no, I think it's his property.
But the neighbor's fence.
The fence is his neighbor's.
The neighbor's fence is on his property.
It's, it's fence on the side.
It looks like it's a chain link.
It's fence on the side, it's fence on the rear.
Well, if it is his fence, even remove it, if it is not his fence, what is supposed to do?
That's on his property.
It's on his property.
So is it the backyard that you are talking about, right? Yeah, so...
Sure we can.
It's property, you can...
Yes, but it is his property.
It's wooden fences. It's one over here, who's that one? Look at that. Hey, don't even, this is the chain link fence. No, this is the wooden fence.
It's wooden.
Yeah, look real close, I can't read that.
Actually, it is between, between two properties.
I mean, it's his property, but we can't...
Falling down.
He says it's coming down, it's, it's already collapsing, he's taking it down.
It's already in collapse, yeah.
The fence along the back of your property, you're going to remove, correct?
Okay, yeah.
That's your fence, it's on your property.
Yeah.
The other part of the fence that runs on the side, you're going to have to talk to your neighbor, is that in good condition, or is that falling down as well?
There is no other fence anywhere except the backyard, as of today.
That chain link fence on...
There is no chain link fence as of today.
If I'm standing in the back of your house right now, you've got a backyard, wood fence is falling down, there's also one on the left, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah, there is a chain link fence, four feet.
Okay.
Yes.
Whose fence is that?
That, I have no knowledge, but, yeah.
But it's in good condition?
It's in good condition.
All right, so you're going to remove the one in the back?
Correct.
That's on his property, from the corner over.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No.
Are there, at this time, I would ask if there are any questions from the public that you come forward. No one from the public has any questions.
Anyone for or against this application, want to speak?
No one's come forward, forward can have a motion.
Sure. I think this is a minor ask, they're looking to improve a site to stay in town, and he's going to go along with the engineering letter, so I will, and take down the back fence, so I'm going to be voting for it. Want me to continue?
Go for it.
Application 23:50, Prashant Patel, 130 Flemington Drive, block 260, lot 10, zone R4. Recommend granting a C variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling, roofed entranceway, open deck with stairs contrary to section 430-35, columns 2, 3, 4, 7, and 10, section 430-10, 1, or I, with adhering to taking down the back fence and doing everything required in the engineering letter.
Second, ready. And Nora?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Okay, the application's approved, you can talk to Nora after the next meeting, once we vote on the resolution.
Thank you for that.
Okay, George. All right, application 2342, Jay Shree Patel, H. Ridgewood Avenue.
Who's going to be testifying, both?
I will be, but she's the homeowner.
Okay, so...
I'm the son. I live at the residence.
So raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to provide before the board to show yourself you got.
Yeah.
And for the record, you're here with your mother, and she's the owner of the house, and you just live at the house. Thank you, you're sworn.
Thank you.
Have a seat, talking to you.
All right, you're looking to construct a sidewalk expansion, a front walk expansion, a shed on pavers that are already there, and you want to legalize a walkway and rear patio, correct?
Yes.
All right, tell us about it.
So the front steps already had the landing that was existing there, that was already pavers. There was a walkway that leads to the backyard, that was concrete originally, but it was cracking and everything, so the concrete patio all the way to the back, the shed was probably built back in 1960s or 70s originally with the house, when we bought the house in 1957, no, 1987 roughly. So the shed was coming apart, rats were getting in and everything like that, so shed had to come down eventually with the concrete patio underneath it. So what we decided to do, I didn't know about the new zoning laws and everything like that, I moved back into town from Virginia to save my mom after my father passed away a year and a half ago, so we decided with our family and everything, hey, let's rip out the concrete, just change out the concrete to the pavers, and the front landing, paver to paver, so it all matches consistently all the way through. But we did not know that, so the work is almost complete, and they stopped work, the Michael from zoning, he came to stop the work, he told us, go speak to the office, get all the paperwork, and then we'll go through the proper process, I said, no problem, let's do it. So the work has been halted since the summertime.
And the pavers, what's in between them, is it sand, or is it like a polymer?
He has like gravel, like really thin concrete type of gravel going between it, and then has a concrete, like a, like a plastic type of thing to hold the bricks together.
So that means it's solid and the water is not going through?
The water, the water is going through, sorry.
That's...
It's like, it has this really small barrier on the side of it, so the pavers don't shift?
Yeah, so that's on the side to hold them together?
Yes, just to hold them together, yes, very small edge, yes.
But where you put the pavers, they then put sand on top of it?
Yes, 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 yes.
So it's not cemented, it's...
Not cemented, no, sir.
Water will go through.
Water would definitely go through, yes. The storm that we just had, there exists, the part that was done, the water did flow through properly, that I saw, with everything in the back. So the shed that was originally in the back of the house, it was oversized shed, so what we decided to do, the same size, we changed it to the patio, and then the patio, we just moved that to, for the newer shed, with a smaller, like a, like a plastic type of fence in the back, shed in the back.
So did you read the engineering letter?
No, I have not gotten the engineering letter.
It's not so simple.
Yeah, you're not going to like it, because he presents some significant water runoff issues in light of what you just described, so, I mean, that, again...
I would read it, it's, it's a little difficult.
Yep.
We spoke to Mr. James in engineering, Liam Chengle-Barnum, and he said, as long as it's, because we're just changing the small patio to the back and the big patio to the back of the house.
No, you know what it is, I get it to the naked eye, it doesn't seem like a lot, but I mean, we, we have professionals and engineers for this particular reason, and this engineer report really kind of cites, you know, concerning issues in regards to the storm water management.
I would take a minute to read it, because you're telling us something from somebody else that we don't know is fact, and what we have as fact is concerning.
And your impervious coverage is 12% over, that's why we need to look at that.
I mean, it may seem little for this project, but if we approved every single project in Lake Hiwatha based on these terms, I mean, you know, the water runoff problem would be a significant concern, and, and so, you know, the buck's got to stop here.
Read four real well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm...
Yeah, I would just add, current weather conditions really amplify and solidify what, why we really need to be concerned about storm water runoff in Lake Hiwatha, particularly lower Lake Hiwatha.
Here's something you might want to think about.
Okay.
You might want to ask us to carry this, so you have time to talk to your contractor, because really, the only way that this is going to be approved is if you agree to those conditions, and when you see the phrase hefty cost associated with it, I think you might want to see what that entails.
If, just a suggestion, if, what if we were to get rid of the back patio? The, the shed patio?
Yeah, there's nothing that's going to happen now at the next meeting in January or wherever you get carried to. There's nothing life-threatening here. So why don't you go meet with the township engineer, or his associates, and discuss this letter with them?
Okay.
Figure out whether you can or cannot accommodate what you want, would like to have done, and if you can't, then maybe you got to alter your project a little bit.
Okay, so...
Instead of going around in circles.
I got you, understand. So, once I speak to him, the town engineer, we come down to solid, okay, yes, yes?
Just to let you know, we will need something from him in writing.
That's what I was just about to say.
Yes, that says, this is the accommodation we're willing to make?
Okay.
Or do.
Okay.
Because if you come back and said, I ironed it out with him, he said this, we can't take that.
Understood.
Fair?
That's no problem. And who do I speak to in engineering?
I would call Justin Lizza, he's the head of the engineering department, and they might send somebody else, but you'll get your answers that way.
Oh, that's a better, that's the best way to proceed with this, you would...
Yeah, because it's just, because he's giving you a solution, but in four, he's telling you it could be expensive, and it could be not doable.
Got you.
So you don't want to start, and then find out you're stuck.
Okay, okay, sounds good, then.
All right, so you're willing to carry this case and grant us all extensions needed to do so?
Yes.
February 28th.
And it'll be without further notice, anyone here for this application immediately?
Do I have to let everybody else know?
No.
No, right, that's what you said, okay. It's costly.
February 28th. All right, so this is being carried to February 28th?
Okay.
Without further notice, and talk to Mr. Lizza, good luck.
Understood.
See you then.
Thank you very much.
We're going to make a motion to carry.
Oh, yeah.
Stand by.
Motion to carry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you. Okay, that brings us to 2353, Arthur and Eric Stosky, 35, first flip.
May I raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board to show yourself you got? And for the record, you're Erica?
I'm Erica.
And Arthur's not going to be here tonight?
No.
Okay. Have a seat, just please speak up into the microphone.
All right, so you're looking to construct a second-story addition, a one-story roof, porch, and entranceway. Okay, why don't you tell us about it?
We are currently in a rez ranch, and we're hoping to take the roof off and add a second story, adding some bedrooms, we've got three young kids that are getting bigger, and we've got family out of state that we'd like to have guest rooms, so we're hoping to expand the house for that reason. And the exception that we have is the two upper windows, our architect has advised should be cantilevered forward, just for structural purposes and also for aesthetic purposes, that structurally, the entrance and entryway would be stronger having these cantilevers, and also, we're on a hill, and to make the front of the house, I guess, is more interesting to break it up, instead of having one large wall, we wanted to add some depth and texture so that it's not an eyesore to the neighbors. But the result of that, because of where our house is right now, we're already very close to the setback from the street, whereas I think the 40 feet, and those two upstairs windows would push us two feet over the setback.
The jewelry varies, correct?
That's right.
Did you get this letter?
Was that about the soil?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
So if you, if we were to vote, you would agree to the terms of the letter?
Yeah, I did have a question about it.
Go ahead.
The architect that we're working with, Rich Dowko, he called and said that these would be addressed in the building application process, so I, I guess, once we got to that point, we would go through them, but like, about the soil...
Well, you won't get approved here without, I don't think, without agreeing to these terms.
I, yeah, I mean, we would, we would, we would follow the rules and get the permits and the, you know, the application process, we wanted to do that.
Who do you have?
I just wasn't sure, like, at what point we're supposed to do that.
Right. What, what are your plans for the attic?
Right now, we have it unfinished, I think we would leave it unfinished, that we would just have the second story as bedrooms, and then an upstairs, unfinished attic above that.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Questions from the public? No one's come forward, any comments from the public for or against? Okay, no one's come forward, someone on the board want to make a statement?
Just before that, I just want to make sure that unfinished attic is going to be an unfinished attic, and like, later on, after the approval, it doesn't be converted into any type of, like...
In the, in the resolution, I know...
Okay, yeah, kitchen or anything like that, all right.
All right, someone want to...
This is a reasonable request for the family needs, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, you want to frame the resolution?
Application 23:53, Arthur and Eric Stosky, 35, link of, block number 158, lot 104, zone RDS3, to issue or grant a C variance to construct a second-story addition, including cantilevers, third feet, and one-story roof porch, entranceway contrary to section 430-35, column four, and in compliance with the engineer's report, and the attic should be unfinished.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Okay, Nora?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
All right, your application is passed, after the next meeting, when we approve the resolution, you'll be free to continue.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, application 2354, Cheryl DiOrio.
Who's going to provide testimony?
This is Cheryl DiOrio, and I'm Sergeant James DiOrio.
So who's going to provide testimony?
You will.
Raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to provide to the board to show yourself you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name? All right, so you're sworn, have a seat, talk into the microphone, and do you live at the home?
I do not.
Okay, so you're just going to be testifying about?
Just in general about the variance that's required.
And you, and you've worked with your mom, consulted with your mom?
Oh, yeah, I have the contractors come in.
So you, so you're factual, you know what you're going to be testifying?
Yeah.
Very good.
All right, let's start.
Sure.
Okay, my mother's been looking to construct a deck that's long for probably about 40 years, ever since, you know, father passed away, what, 13, 14 years ago, and finally, coming to the point where we're going to try to make that happen. Did not realize until, I'd say, about six months ago, that a variance was even required, because you have Pittman Place, which is a front address, and Dickerson Road is in the back, which is actually in Denville, or on the other side, that is the border of Denville, and we thought it was a rear yard, I called zoning and I checked, and to a deck, it only requires 10-foot setback, but then we realized, when I had applied and called the tenant, like, no, you actually do need a variance, and you want to, so Nora, I've got all the paperwork and whatnot, because it counts as two front yard setbacks. So as a result, I think that happened here, it's like, 24-foot is existing to the house, wires 40, we're looking for 12.75 feet, the deck were protrude about 12 feet off of the[1739.63] feet off of the back of the home. And as a result, it pushes impervious, which is already over slightly. It pushes up a little bit more. But I do notice the engineer's missed one thing. He forgot to back off the porch that's going to be demolished. So we would actually get back twenty-seven point five feet of impervious coverage. Regardless of that, I do have the engineer and letter my mother gave me yesterday. We looked through it, recommendation for a dry well system to be installed, and I understand the need, but had a had a question about it in general, and may not specify to some of the application, but this is an open deck. It's slatted, it's not solid. So the water's going to infiltrate through. So I had a question in general, does that still count as impervious?
Maybe you can explain that to the engineer. You've heard the cases before. Generally practice is to condition it on the engineer's letter, and if you work out a different way of dealing with things.
Okay.
You're going to get it writing to get it back here.
Understood.
But.
Okay, yeah, and you know, I think you're still going to have to see infiltration being that it's open. And we're actually.
The town's ordinance, the town's ordinance doesn't have that provision. A lot of towns do. But you can explain to the engineers, not rocket science.
Okay, I think we just miss specifying that in the application. And I think the other recommendation was a perk test to be done there, which I think that kind of goes hand in hand with what you're saying.
Yep.
But I mean, there's a few variances, the setback, the impervious coverage, and the.
This is Mount David. Nobody could.
No, I know.
We drove a long time to Warzoni.
Butler Pass.
That's right.
Yeah, it's out the front door, goes up to the golf course.
Oh.
And that's been vacated, it says. It says it's been vacated.
Butler Pass? No, it's still it's still, it's a it's a one-way street now.
On your application, it indicates that it was, it says that per the engineering department, Butler Pass has been vacated. So it's not a public through throughway on your property.
Oh, no, it's not a public throughway on the property. No, I didn't even realize that, to be honest. But it stops at the property. The curb line is there.
Any more questions from the board?
Nope.
Public? Any questions from the public? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this application? There's nobody. All right, comment from the board?
The minimus. And we'll adhere with the engineering and come back to us with a letter where they end up.
All right, keep going.
Okay, application twenty-three colon fifty-four Cheryl DiOrio, fifteen Pittman Place, block thirty-seven, lot seven, zone R three, recommend granting a C variance to construct the deck contrary to section four thirty dash ten, I section four thirty dash thirty-five, column four and thirteen, with consultation with engineering and getting back to us with a letter agreeing to any terms.
Seconded. Nora?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder. Yes.
All right, we're all set. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you. And then based on resolution requirements, we just have to.
Yeah, after the next meeting in January, call Nora. She'll let you know when you're good. But you got to talk to the engineer and get that adjusted.
Understood, yeah. All right, thank you all.
Good luck.
All right, moving at warp speed.
Keep it up.
Try it. Twenty-three fifty-six Danielle Palastina. Did I say that right? All right.
Ma'am, raise your right hand. You swear affirm testimony about to the board is truth self you got?
Yes.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes, Danielle Palastina, P A L S T I N.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, you want to build a retaining wall and patio?
Yes.
Tell us why.
Okay, I am brand new homeowner. Purchased the home in May twenty twenty-two. Upon inspection, the inspector told me that the retaining wall eventually would have to be replaced. Over the past year and a half, I developed a sinkhole, and the retaining wall started to lean into my neighbor's fence. Out of fear that my driveway was going to collapse or the wall was going to collapse, I started the work. When we started excavating, we found that there was a storm pipe that was against the foundation that was leaking and basically ended in the middle of my driveway. So storm drains were updated and replaced and now tie into the main sewer line that are or storm line. Got a permit for that. Through all of that, learned that I needed a variance for the wall. And so here I am.
It's really a safety issue.
Safety issue, absolutely.
And there are two minor notes. You've seen that?
Yes.
You're willing to comply?
Yes.
There's really nothing there.
No.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Nope. It's it's a case of what would we all have done if we were in that situation? I'm sorry, if I spoke out of turn, but that's basically it, right?
Uh, anyone here from the public have any questions for the applicant? Anyone from the public have a comment on this application? Nobody. All right, someone from the board?
Again, I think my little sporadic spur said it all. What would we have done if we were in that situation? This is a safety issue. It's a de minimis ask in light of that safety issue, and I'll be voting for.
Hey, want to keep going to the resolution?
Uh, sure. Chair, in the case of application twenty-three fifty-six Danielle Palastina at one eighty-eight Elmwood Drive, block two fifty-two, lot twenty-one, zone R four, that we grant a C variance to construct a retaining wall and patio contrary to section four thirty dash eleven, D sections four thirty dash two seventy-five, X and sections four thirty dash thirty-five, columns eight and thirteen.
Second, Casey. Nora?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder. Yes.
All right, passes. Good luck with your wall. Okay, last one. Twenty-three fifty-five Alpha Investments. See how fast we're going tonight?
Keep it up.
That's what we're hoping.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Simone Cali, Cali Law LLC, on behalf of the applicant, Alpha Investments. Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight for an application seeking variance relief for the property located at sixty Winona Avenue. This applicant, Alpha Investments LLC, is perhaps familiar to this board, certainly familiar to the township. He's a known developer and takes pride in his development work and the homes that he builds. We are here due to the issuance of a stop work order. My client was in the process of renovating an existing home. And long story short, the stop work order was issued. Too many walls came down, zoning officer came out or code enforcement, and that's why we immediately made the application to this board to obtain the variance relief to ratify what has already been done in the field. Unless you have any preliminary questions for me, that's that's really the why we're here tonight. I have two witnesses, but we are taking the hint, and I only intend to call one this evening. So without further ado, I can introduce our land surveyor, Mr. Stephen Smith.
Out of curiosity, who's the other witness?
Architect.
And what's the hint? I'm sorry.
Ah.
You guys are going through these so quick tonight. I don't think you want to hear from more than one person.
Okay.
If we have questions, we'll ask.
Sir, if you raise your right hand, you swear affirm testimony about to the board is truth self you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name? And you're you're certified planner?
Yeah, you need to speak into the mic. Speak into the mic, sir.
I think this one is.
And your testimony tonight will be as a planner or as the land surveyor of both?
I'm a licensed land surveyor and planner.
And all your licenses are full force of effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've been qualified before this board before and other boards in the state?
That is also correct.
Mr. Chairman is qualified as an expert. Thank you, and you're sworn.
Thank you. Again, the the long the long and short is, we had a plans into the town that we didn't think were a problem that all of a sudden did become a problem. That when we started on the project, there was an existing framed garage. There was a wood platform patio behind it and a rather large paved driveway. Those items were removed. We constructed in addition on the garbly side of the house, put in a new driveway and put on a second floor. One of the things that's very unusual is that on this application, we're actually reducing the impervious coverage on the property by eleven hundred and fifty-one square feet, which is almost unheard of when you go back in and do redevelopment. So the the variances that we're looking for are for the pre-existing non-conforming front yards that became an issue because all the the walls came down. The closest.
Can I interrupt a second? Did you get a building permit under the rehab section? Or did you get a stop work order because they're reclassifying this?
I believe that the stop work came came about because more walls were taken down.
Which triggers a different code.
Yeah.
Correct.
So that's why, so you lost your non-conformities because you no longer were treated as a developed lot. You were treated as a vacant lot.
Correct. It it went from not a problem to a problem because they took down the walls that had issues with the studs on it.
Now you have to pay your development.
The the non-conformity in the.
This is a technicality. This is all a technicality.
The non-conformity in the front yard setback on the one side is approximately nine inches. On the other front, it's about three inches. So we're talking minimal. The other variance that's being requested is for building coverage. That on the front stoop, Mr. Gupta constructed a roof or awning over that front stoop. That's three by seven and a half. By your ordinance, that is deemed part of the building coverage. So now we exceed the building coverage by twenty-one square feet. Just as a note, the building coverage that we are seeking is actually less than what was previously there. When we took down the garage, we actually end up with a net decrease on the building coverage. It still exceeds your ordinance, but there's less than there was before we started. And there was another issue that was raised regarding a fence, and that was something that I was not sure what that was. So I stopped out again today to take a look at it. And originally, there was fence that went down the part of the northerly property line that went to the front corner of the garage. And then there was fence that started at the southeast of the corner of the garage and went southerly. When the garage came down, it then left an opening between the two neighbors. The neighbor asked Mr. Gupta if he would put up a fence to finish closing it up. He put the fence up where the garage was, which is less than the six inches off of the property line, which then triggers then.
So you're saying the neighbor wants, because it's on the property line, right?
Yeah, we put it.
And the neighbor wants that.
Mr. Gupta just figured if it made the the gentleman happy, he put the fence up. So he did.
The fence is good neighbors.
So now we should bring the neighbor in to testify that he wanted.
Is the neighbor here?
So those, you know, were the variances that we're, you know, seeking, you know, tonight. Again, all, you know, de minimis in nature, you know, to feel that the the aesthetics that has been created by the new construction and the the fact that the the covered stoop actually is a safer ingress and egress from the house if it's in in bad weather. I feel that, in my opinion, you can grant these variances without substantially impairing the intent purpose of the zoning plan or no impact on the neighborhood.
The fence, it's the same fence. It's not like a different random, he just extended.
So it doesn't look like patchwork.
I'm sorry. Well, the the fence that's up there now is new. The other, of course, was not new.
But it's the same type.
A newer section effect.
No, but it's the same type of fence. In other words, we're concerned about aesthetics. If you haven't read into Mr. Kaplan or the chairman's comments.
I'm I'm sorry.
Aesthetically.
From the road, you can't see the fence. It's not till you walk to the back of the house.
But it's the same, if if there is a wood fence there, he replaced it with wood and not vinyl. If there was a vinyl fence, he didn't change it.
It's it's wood to wood, but it's old to new.
It's just whether it would.
We got it. But it's not it's not wood to PVC.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It'll look the same in a year. All right, and other than that, we're we're talking quarter of a percent here, a couple feet there, nothing else. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Ma'am, are you from the public on this? I saw you.
No, that's my wife.
Oh.
So you have a fan club today? It's your big time.
Bring your own audience.
Okay. Boo and hiss him. That'd be funny.
Any questions? All right. Anyone in the public wish to make a comment on this application? All right, someone from the board want to make a comment?
Sure.
Seems de minimis in nature. What, you know, really, just I don't know what you're.
Yeah, and I'd like to add a little to it. I drove past the area. It really does look nice. And, you know, in regards to this fence thing, you know, you know, these fencing codes that, you know, were probably drawn up when this was a quiet lakeside community. But now, you know, we're becoming more voluminous in, you know, in the residency, if you will. So as long as it's aesthetically pleasing and the neighbor is not complaining about it, I too, if I was your neighbor, would want that fence as well. So, you know, at the bottom of, at the end of the equation, we always want to want to put our shoes into your neighbor's, excuse me, we want to put our feet into your neighbor's shoes. So yeah, I agree with Mr. Jaskowitz. I think this is de minimis in nature. And really, it is a vast improvement in regards to what's already there. So I'll be going for it too.
All right, anyone to frame the resolution?
Sure. Application twenty-three colon fifty-five Alpha Investments, sixty Winona Avenue, block five twenty-four, lot nineteen, zone R four, recommending granting a C variance to construct a new single-family dwelling contrary to sections four thirty dash eleven D, four thirty dash thirty-five, columns two, four, and ten.
Seconded.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder. Yes.
All right, passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the house look good. Just for the record, forty-five minutes, six cases.
Ma'am, you should be very proud of him. He was a leader today.
Motion to adjourn.
So. Yeah, second.
Happy holidays, everybody.
We have to approve.
We didn't begin.
You were messing with the cookies.
I was messing with the cookies.
Happy holidays.
Holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy healthy.
Happy everything.
The last, like, last meeting of the year.
Hope to see you next year. If you may not know, you may have a favor now.
I'll make you deal.